So, so am I here? Okay, so this is Paul Dated Me. Okay. Okay. Hang on. Uh, to, to, to time, where would our speakers go? Are they gonna do it from there?
No, they're gonna, uh...
The camera's gonna do the presentation.
We got the fancy clicker, so I can do... It's all those one thing. Yeah, I can make, uh, highlights. Cause there is a couple of points in ours where we want to, um, highlight some different things, so... And then when, uh, Lorraine comes up, she'll just use this as well. Same thing. If she wants to use the little spotlight thing, she can.
Okay.
Looking at, looking at her PowerPoint didn't seem like that was gonna be a big thing.
And Norm will be happy because he likes it when I have something branded.
Yeah.
Versus just the generic Diet Coke can, so, oh my god.
There you go. We're...
We're breaking all the food and beverage rules in the theater.
Yes, I did mention that to the boss.
Hey, Norman.
Yes, sir.
Is it possible we could put it back in here? It's not hard to see.
That's fine. I'm not the star of the show. Oh, I'm not the star of the show.
Hopefully, everything is still working. Cause that's the only thing I was worried about with the floor box.
I'm still getting pee from you, and I'm still...
Yeah, I would say the, the, uh, crestron is still...
Yeah.
Working. Cool. And then I still see it on there, so...
Look, I've got my pee.
I think we're okay.
Yeah. I'm sorry you didn't see your text last night. I did not have my phone out to look at texts, but I'm glad you came over. Yep. Yeah.
And then sometime in the future, uh, I'm gonna ask Elena to help me do research.
Yeah, just put pee at one end or the other. Don't put them in the middle, but other than that, just make it up.
Yeah. Uh, I would say, you know, so the only thing that was fine, which is why we have everything shifted over, is whoever sits here, I wanna make sure that they don't, uh, plummet. Cause this is right here. But yes, we did kinda shift all the chairs and stuff over. Everyone's gonna sit a little bit closer. Uh, but that's just kind of the limitations of the stage. Yeah, plus the important thing is to give us a plank check to move that danger screen to the back.
Somehow I can't think of what they're gonna do.
Oh, yeah, this is, uh...
I know, I'm a little bit too... I can take this off and just like... But I never looked at it. You're breaking, you're... You know, you're a cat.
I think, well, this is a cat. It's just very, like, endless biting and makes me... So this is... Now it's...
Yeah. Thanks.
Um, pause. Do you wanna make a correction?
Or the function's...
Do you remember what slide?
We'll have to... H.O.
Oh, it even, it even tells us. There, I fixed it.
Thank you.
It says soundtrack, it's misspelled.
Unless you've made any changes.
For my work.
Yeah. May they ever... May love me in three months. Well, I'm, I'm the only person, but that's not good.
Yeah, I can.
That's probably not good. Or I'm the only person. Yeah, it's just me. Yeah, yeah, it's like, I've been in it for ten days, and it's like, it shouldn't work. So, like, everybody else is like, I'm blocking it. But, like, it does sound a lot. Well, cause single sign-in works, uh, for my email and things and stuff. I haven't, I've never had a problem with this. Yep.
I need to sign off this email, so we don't get...
Yeah.
Gloria is the trendsetter. The young one saw your pants, is like, "I like it."
Oh, okay. Thank you. Well, we're at... These mics are hot. Um, we're at twenty-five. It's not bad. Um, donations range from twenty dollars to a thousand dollars and every amount in between, so that's really exciting. We're gonna make it. Yep. We just put in an application. Steven Chapman has a family foundation, and he has suggested that we ask for twenty-five thousand, so we're going to. We're also going to ask Do It Best. Your silver is beautiful. Oh, thank you. I like it. I agree, I don't like working girls, they make me nervous. Where are you going to gather your birthday?
Um, it's that week of August eleventh.
Oh, okay.
That's the motorcycle trip.
Oh. Yeah, the Paul.
Did you get one of these on?
No, I'm not.
No?
Whoa. Nope. On the cross. This is exciting. Do you wanna sign it?
Yeah, that'll really take me down.
You can put it on eBay? Where am I sitting? Is this in?
Do we know if everybody's coming but Ben?
We haven't heard they aren't. Yeah, I don't wanna go over that again. One decision's up. We have each one.
And who's there?
You should just mess them up now, then, when they're watching.
Okay, so who will I, who will I mess?
I'll tell him.
Yeah. So tie up about twenty-four years and help sign all the... You guys are like the directors there.
Are you gonna audition for us?
Sure. I, I guess.
Could you cue up the music, please?
I have to dance across the stage when I'm getting the signatures for...
I think you should do a little kind of dance or something, Gloria.
Knowing me, I'll do that. It's like, they dare put me near the screen, cause I'll turn wacko. No. I'll just... Hey, I need to... Thank you, Gloria. I got you.
I saw the YouTube that's there.
Well, that's almost a lot.
Yes.
Yes.
You're here. You get the...
Good, how are you?
How's your fiance doing?
Better. Thank you. Almost lost it.
No, for me, it's, it's pretty much like... Yeah.
Good. So that was a good record. Send my wife over here again.
Ben is traveling today to New York.
Thank you. Uh, next up would be the adoption of our agenda. Somebody would like to move?
So moved.
Second.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same. Approval of the minutes. Uh, to entertain a motion under number three for A, B, C, and D.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Financial report.
All right, thank you, Paul. Um, we've got a number of presentations today, so I'll keep this brief, even for Dave. Um, really the main things to report on, there is one line that's, uh, spending ahead of benchmark, and it's maintenance supplies, and those are tied right to the roof work that's going on right now. So, uh, nothing really surprising there. That'll need to have money moved in, you know, for that. Uh, other lines are, are spending within their benchmark. The news and notes at your place was the hard copy of the...
CAFR.
ACFR that was put together. So that was all filed by the July, or June thirtieth date, and we have that up for award submission. So, keeping our fingers crossed, that'll be the thirty-second year we would receive that, so... Um, other thing, of course, right now, the big thing's the budget. The numbers from the state keep rolling in. We know the growth quotient is at four percent, which is also what our expense budget has to be tied to. And then we did have miscellaneous revenues for excise and in, financial institution tax, and those showed an increase. So, I always like it when it goes in that direction. We're waiting on the, uh, local income tax numbers and the tax cap numbers at this point, and then we'll be putting together the, the initial budget, you know, projections at that point. I know Elena is in, busy trying to set up a finance and personnel committee meeting sometime, hopefully in August or early September, and we'll be going over the details of the budget more clearly, and also Lorraine's compensation benefit and the ancillary insurance presentations. Uh, and then just a brief update on the roof. I, I mentioned we're spending the supplies pretty quickly. I hate to say this, I don't wanna jinx it, but the, the roof work is going great. Uh, the weather has been very cooperative. Uh, the, the, they are finishing. Of course, what they are doing is replacing the roof, the, the membrane on that, moving around the building, and as those are, are, uh, replaced, it'll be available for then the solar panels to be installed after that. At the same time, they're in the process of removing or mothballing the chillers that are in the building, and the new ones will go up on top of the roof after those sections are completed. So, all in all, according to the consultants, the completion date is well ahead of schedule, and well before we would want, you know, we were looking to have everything done by the end of the year. It should be done before that even. So, great news there. Not much else to report, but I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Uh, would the, the record reflect that Mr. Williams has joined, joined us? Uh, are there any questions for David?
Uh, I did have some questions.
I did have some questions. Are there any other major maintenance projects that you're expecting this year, at this point?
Nothing in an emergency status. These would, the projects that we're working on now would have been all planned projects. Probably the biggest one going on is the redesign of the Duncan space in the Maker Lab for that project. I know we still have on the table, we're not sure whether we're gonna complete it yet, but storyscapes. There was money put away for two additional storyscapes, getting those done. But, nothing in the emergency. All of the HVAC projects were done early in the year. They were, a lot of them were hairy over from the end of last year. And then, if the roofs can stay in place, and the biggest ones were, of course, DuPont, and then this main one. Nothing else, you know, and in your capital report, it'll show those projects that we're gonna be working on this year, and you'll see there aren't many that are of an emergency basis.
Thanks.
Sure.
If there are no further questions, I would accept a motion to approve the financial report.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, same. That has passed. Approval of claims.
All right, today's claims, not too large of a one. $574,000 in account payable claims, of which $181,000 of it is, go figure, Fort Wayne Roofing for the project. So, that's gonna be the large one. And then, system-wide electrical. We're in the air conditioning season, so that was at eighty, I'm sorry, $68,000 is the next highest claim. So, not terrible today.
Any questions on the claims? If not, would somebody like to have a proposed a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
I'll bring this in.
Our next agenda item is number six, and we're gonna talk about theater upgrades. I think that the lighting is working very well. So I'm not sure if you need to do anything with those, but welcome.
So we are in, as you can see, our beautiful and very well-lit Maine Library Theater. We've had some recent technological upgrades, and I have asked our events manager, Leanne, and our senior events technician, Donnie, to tell you all about them.
Thank you for coming down to the theater. I know it's a change in venue, but equipment is great, technology is great. It's the people behind the equipment that really makes it worth, and I cannot thank senior management enough for championing these upgrades, and my event tech staff, along with Access Fort Wayne. Maintenance always comes in to help when needed as well. This is a quick overview. We did it in three parts. We upgraded our projector, our audio, and our ADA listening devices. This was a team effort, and Donnie, who's been promoted to senior tech, really aided in this process big time. Before, our projector was a ball projector. We went and upgraded to a laser projector, 4K. Some of this might be Latin to some, so I included visual aids. This was before. This was an image taken, and you will notice...
Wrong one, top one.
There was degradation and lines, and the image quality was less than to be desired. The afterimage, crisp, vivid. That's what a high-resolution lens will give you. It was well overdue. We also moved the projector to outside the control room to aid in the image. Anything you would like to add, Donnie?
Normally, projectors have an average lifespan of about seven years, give or take, so this was about right on course for projector replacement.
Again, more Latin, but with pictures. We took our old Soundcraft audio board. We repurposed it. We're not going to auction it. We're not going to throw it away. We're gonna use it for remote productions, so when you all go on the road, or we have press conferences and we need a multi-panel equipment, we will take it on the road with us. We upgraded to an Allen &amp; Heath. My event tech staff are extremely happy. They have been training, and, yes, training. We added a monitor backstage. We also reconfigured floor boxes and added outputs, which helps with events. And, anything you would like to add?
We added a XLR out, which would provide an additional way to get sound out, or if a band comes in and they have their own powered monitor, this XLR will help in that, because before, we just had to tell them no. And then, we also have a way to send an HDMI signal to the floor space. So if we're doing a hybrid meeting, like a Zoom or Teams meeting, that can all be run here from the stage, instead of running a hundred-foot cable from the control room.
I know many of you have attended events in a theater, and they range from recitals, presentations, panel discussions, a puppet show, a full gamut of events. So, we do, we really expanded the use of equipment and events that we can hold. We also upgraded our ADA listening. We added a visual component, so I will throw it.
We went with the visual ADA component, which is new to most theaters, but this will allow folks with visual disabilities, that even sitting at the front row, not being able to see the screen, to use their own personal device to see what is on the projector. Me being one of them people, if I don't have my glasses, it doesn't matter how close I get to that projector. So, having that additional ADA is very beneficial to the patrons. We've also upgraded the listening device. Before, they just had these standard antennas, and it did not reach the full gambit of the theater, or outside the theater seating, so we increased the range on that, and then upgraded to a slimmer, easier-to-use listening device.
We have put this new technology in play during a artist guild?
Yes. Fort Wayne Artist Guild was down here, so they did a live demo onstage, as well as there are other things, but some of the folks who was not in a good seating to see the demo, we had a camera over shot to shoot the demo, and they were able to watch it on their phone.
Can I ask, is that supposed to be working right now?
Yes, it should be working.
All right. I couldn't get it open. Safari can't open the page, because it couldn't connect to the server.
There, I have some step-by-steps. So, the first thing, any patron who wants to use the visual ADA has to change to the ACPL ADA Wi-Fi. So normally, you would probably default to just the open ACPL Wi-Fi.
I did, yeah.
So, you gotta switch to the ADA, so that gets you on the right server.
Okay.
And then, from there, you can scan that QR code. So far, we do not have the certification, so when you open that up on your browser, it will say, "Warning, this site is not safe." But it is. We've tested it many times.
Yes, they are.
So you just have to hit advance and proceed. Once you have proceeded to the site, you'll see this ACPL theater. You can go ahead and type in a name, and then hit join, and then you should be able to see what's on the projector.
Safari's not even letting me go forward.
Uh-oh.
Saying go back.
But anytime, we always have a tech here onsite when we have a theater event, so if a patron does have any issues, they can always come up to us, and we can work that through with them.
Okay.
And we just tested it, go figure.
Yeah, okay.
Go figure. With that, again, it's a team effort, so I thank you for listening and for your support, and we will always request more technology. So, yes, we, thank you. Any questions?
I did. How often are we using this space? Just per day? Like, is it 100 days a year, 50 days a year? And what is our hope to increase it, to make it even more?
Great question. This theater is used probably three times a week on average, sometimes twice a day. During the holiday times, I could have up to 17 recitals in the month of December. We have several political candidate forums upcoming. I have multi-microphone use on the stage. Oh, gosh, we've had dance recitals just recently.
We have music at the library here during, essentially every, all throughout the year, we'll have bands come up here, so we'll do a full band setup and have them mic'd, and so that's the people in concert can hear, and it's also been recorded back, Access Fort Wayne, so then they can hear as well later. But, we have definitely evolved in the theater from its, I think, initial function, when it was first built in '07. So, we've upgraded our lighting and our audio, so we can, we can help support that full gambit of theater events that patrons would like to come and use the theater for.
The Arts United Campus is going through a construction phase, I think everybody knows, and I am working closely with them to divert some resources, rehearsal space, so we are a good neighbor, and we're filling a gap right now. So, increased use. I'm seeing a lot of increased use.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to agenda item number seven. Our Director of Human Resources, LaRae, going to provide us information on Nectar?
Nectar, yeah.
You have it. Okay, good. I was worried at first. I was like, oh no, do you have the clicker?
I have the clicker.
Okay, there you go.
All right, thanks, Donnie. So, I want to introduce everybody to a new recognition and rewards program that we started on July 8th of this year, so only a couple weeks So tying into our strategic plan, specifically the focus area of creating a culture of belonging, we set a goal to create a culture and a process encouraging staff to share praise for each other. So, Nectar is one of those processes. As any organization, your staff should be some of the best resources that you have, and you all see firsthand how hardworking our staff is. And we have an awesome team here, and we know that it's important to recognize each other, obviously for the big projects, the big events, but also for the day-to-day, the small things that happen. It helps increase job satisfaction and create that culture of belonging. So, we're aiming to create an environment where we lead with positive intent towards each other. So, Nectar is able to keep our mission, vision, and core values front of mind, as we tie recognition to each other. And you have those, those core values and missions here on the screen, and for reference, our vision is "A community connected to each other through lifelong learning and the transformative power of stories." And those stories happen every day here at the library, and sometimes they go unnoticed if they're not recognized by staff. So how Nectar works? Nectar gives staff a platform to recognize or shout out colleagues and direct reports in a format that's similar to a social media feed. So, every month, each staff member gets 10 points to give out to their colleagues, and that can be one point for 10 different colleagues, or 10 points for one colleague. Managers get additional points to give out to their direct reports. So, you send out shout-outs in a personalized message. You can attach a core value to that, and it shows up on that feed for everybody across all 15 locations to see and interact with. And more importantly, it's supposed to just be fun. It's a fun way to celebrate and thank each other.
LaRae, I just want, real basic, is this an actual app?
It's a software. So, it actually connects to our Microsoft 365, so you can connect through it through your email or Teams. And you see the little Nectar symbol, and you can go right into it.
Can the points accumulate if they aren't used, or you haven't used them?
Yes, I'll get to that in a minute, too. The rewards are fun. So, we want the shout-outs to be timely, specific, and personalized. So, there's a big difference between "Thank you, Ben, for everything you do," versus "Thank you, Ben, for the extra care that you took with the patron who needed a more sensory-friendly program. You tailored your program in the moment to be more inclusive, and the patron was so appreciative. Keep up the great work. #LiteracyAndLearning." So, there's a score when you're typing up the shout-out. Red is a very limited, very impersonal shout-out, and then as you get more detailed, and you attach a core value to it, it goes to the green. So you can see how strong your shout-out is. So, when you get points, you get 10, you give 10 points away each month, and staff can redeem those for prizes. So, we know that we're a little bit restricted as a government organization on how much extra compensation, I look at Dave, extra compensation somebody can get in a year. So, we turned off the external rewards, so gift cards, things that they can actually get cash values for, and tried to be creative with in-house options. So they can pick from a variety of custom rewards. I have just one screenshot of many rewards here. And those earned points don't expire. So, an example is, if you work at Maine, you can park in the garage for a week. Probably in the winter is when that would be taken advantage of. Therapy dog visits, which are no cost to us. We have an awesome volunteer program that we use, and if you get up to 150 points, you can work with HR to schedule a therapy dog to come out to your branch or department. Cookies for your team, which are relatively inexpensive. Pizza. Susan offering a storytime. She can go back to her child librarian days. ACPL gear from our gift shop, a behind-the-scenes tour of the fine bookroom, and custom-printed stickers and prints from our print shop. So, a lot of this is stuff that we can do in-house, or is relatively inexpensive. But, 10 points equals one US dollar in Nectar world. Again, like the therapy dog visit technically isn't a cost to us, but there is a cost to the volunteer to come out to that location. So, staff get those points. They don't expire until you redeem them. So, you can, you can gather those points and redeem at your, at your leisure. Due to the scale and the growth of clients, Nectar is also able to leverage national discounts to our staff as just part of our package. There's no additional costs. So, there's discounts to Disney World, theme parks, hotels, online therapy, sports discounts, home and lifestyle discounts, that our staff can use at no additional cost. They're not redeeming their points for this. This is just part of being a Nectar client. So, staff can recognize individuals with or without points, and I want to just give you a couple from this past week that I thought were great. So, Hazy recognized Meredith, hashtag people for service. She said, "Listen, sometimes you know folks are going through something. It's not our business to know what they're going through, but Meredith, you have a knack for helping people feel seen and heard, and getting them through one moment into the next. Thank you for giving the patron the opportunity to do that. It made all the difference, and everyone saw it." And she gave five points. You can see Meredith commented with the heart emojis underneath. Deborah also recognized Misha over at Pontiac. She gave 10 points for teamwork and integrity for cleaning up two separate food spills in the library, so that Katie, who's the EBS housekeeper, wouldn't have to do that when she came in for the day. So, again, helping out people across departments. And then Rebecca recognized Jennifer for, in 20 minutes, putting together a storytime at a coffee shop up for our Grable branch, which had 30 people participate. And they can have GIFs or emojis, make it fun, and then people all across the system can acknowledge them. You can also recognize entire branches or departments. So, I'm gonna give one example from Susan. To the Little Turtle branch, she was at her board meeting for the Literacy Alliance, and my fellow board member approached me to talk about the wonderful service she received from our Little Turtle branch. And again, all of Little Turtle sees that, so it's acknowledging that whole, whole department. Nectar also automatically, so HR doesn't have to do this, automatically sends out work anniversary notices. So, Claire, happy work anniversary. It's been a great five years with you at Allen County Public Library. And that was something that would be very manual on our end, if we didn't have something like Nectar. So, future goals with Nectar. We just started in July. We would like to add challenges in the future, and challenges include points for actions that employee takes, not just for shout-outs. So, example, if we have a new job posting on our website, and somebody shares that job posting on their personal Facebook page, you can get points for that. Being a mentor for a new hire, you can get points for something like that. Walking 1,000 steps a day for so many days, if we want to do health challenges. All of those things would be under the challenges category, which is turned off right now, but we'd like to turn it on in the future. We'd also like to establish a budget for that reward system. So, I mentioned we do all of our rewards right now in-house. We want to see how those are redeemed in the next six months, so we can establish a budget of going forward and what that could entail. And then, cross-departmental recognition is really important. When you have 15 locations, it's really easy to forget what the other one is doing. And so, this is a good way to say, "Oh, I didn't realize that Grable was, was doing that event," or that Hessen Castle, that person stepped up in this way. So, it's a way to bring us all together as one ACPL when we're, when we're spread apart often. Any questions?
I got, first comment, I think it's a great program. I really like the way it works, and I'm thinking maybe we could steal that from my firm, how to use it. But, how do you get feedback from employees, your team, or team, on how it's going? Like, next month, do you ask employees, you know, what do you want to see? Or how do you get feedback on that?
Yeah. So, it's only been a couple of weeks, and I've sort of casually asked managers and staff, "How do you, how's it going?" Yeah, so it's only been a couple of weeks, and I've sort of casually asked managers and staff, how's it going, how do you like Nectar? And we get some staff who are like, this is awesome, I love it, some staff who are like, I'm still not sure how to use it. We sort of want to watch the behavior for a couple of months and see if it's still going in the intended use, or if staff need just a redirection on what it's there for. But we do plan on following up, we've got different ways to do that, but it's only been a couple of weeks, so I'm anxious to see how it goes.
Does Nectar just pop up, or is it, you have to go to that particular program?
You have to go to the program, but there's an icon in your email and in Teams, which we both, we use both of those daily, that you can just click on and it pulls up Nectar. So we try to make it as least amount of clicks as possible.
And if you get a shout-out, or if your teammate or colleague gets a shout-out, one of your direct reports, you get a notification in your email?
Yep.
Lorraine, I'm not suggesting that we get points, but is there a way, because they're being recognized for things like this, is there a vehicle for board members or others to channel information to someone that this feeds through that system?
That's a good question, I'm not sure, Pat, I have to look into that, that's a good question.
My question is, could we get the therapy dog in here?
Therapy dogs are very popular.
We will give you enough points and we can get you a therapy dog, yes.
The license for this, how long do we have that agreement, and what's the cost?
Yes, so we signed on for three years because we were able to get the cost lowered if we had a commitment. And we had the fifteen hundred dollar implementation fee waived because we signed up during their promotion month, and it's ten thousand dollars a year.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions?
It just seems to me that it's a nice way to get people together and have conversations or connections when you're not in the same facility.
Yeah.
I like this.
Yeah, that's always our biggest challenge, because we're so spread out, so.
And I know I learn a lot about what's going on in the branches, all these wonderful things that I may never have known that Jennifer with twenty minutes notice covered for Rebecca for a storytime. That normally probably wouldn't get up to my office, but now I know that.
Good point.
Lorraine, I'm hopeful that a year from now, you'll follow up and give us an update on what's been popular and what the successes or challenges have been.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
Thank you again.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, agenda item number eight, presentation on Safe Place with Beth Boatwright.
Thank you, Beth.
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you all so much for being here today, I'm very excited. Oh, I'm going to let you get started, we've got a video to show. You've probably seen signs and decals like this around town. We're going to start with a little video to explain the Safe Place program, what it is, and then talk about how we're implementing it here at ACPL.
Ready?
Yes, thank you.
I'm Cameron Shackelford, I'm the Allen County Safe Place Coordinator. Safe Place... I'm Cameron Shackelford, I'm the Allen County Safe Place Coordinator. Safe Place is a twenty-four-seven crisis intervention and prevention program. When you come into a Safe Place site or call the Safe Place hotline at two-six-zero-four-six-six-seven-zero-seven-seven, we go into action, providing immediate help and safety. Safe Place sites are located at YMCA's, local churches, fire stations, boys and girls clubs, and anywhere the Safe Place sign is posted. When I was a youth growing up, I didn't reach out for help for other people, from other people. I thought that my situation was normal, but I did feel inside that something was going on. I was being bullied, so I would get into fights all the time, which got me in trouble. I was constantly fighting, I lived in poverty, and I would lash out at other people, and I kept it all in and bottled up inside. And oftentimes, that's not good. It wasn't until I found caring individuals to express my concerns to and be open with, that I really started healing. Safe Place is for youth that are in crisis. A crisis is any situation that a student can't handle and is beyond their control. If you're thinking about suicide or have suicidal thoughts, call Safe Place. If an adult has hit you, call Safe Place. If a friend is abusing you or people are calling you names, you can call Safe Place. Any and all situations are open for discussion with Safe Place. We will not judge you, we will sit with you and listen. Here in the crossroads of America, human trafficking is a real problem. It's not like the movies with the dramatic abduction. Most times, the perpetrator acts like a friend or even a boyfriend. They give you compliments and make you feel like you've never felt before, but in return, they make you do things you don't want to do. Safe Place is here to listen and to figure out what's going on without judging you. If you tell us you don't feel safe, we believe you. If you tell us you don't want to go home, there's a reason you're saying that. If nobody seems to care about your situation and you feel hopeless, we are here to help you. We're here to listen to your situation from your perspective. At the end of this presentation, you'll receive a Safe Place crisis card with the phone number you can call for help. Save the number, put the card in your wallet, remember what a Safe Place sign looks like. You never know when you are going to need to reach out for help.
Graham, and I'm really pleased to have Cameron Shackelford here to tell us about the Safe Place program here in Allen County. Come on.
Hi, and thank you guys all for having me. I haven't seen that video in a long time, and it's, I was like, man, I look younger, but, um... No, this partnership is crucial. I think a couple of years back, we had had a conversation with the libraries trying to be on board for being a Safe Place site, and then we probably dropped the ball due to like all the calls we get. But now that we have the opportunity to show kids this sign at you guys' branches, it just opens up the access for more help for more kids. So we were actually, we just had to do a DCS call for some other kids, but it's a great partnership. We work with kids anywhere from around like bullying all the way up to human trafficking and suicidal ideation. Also in partnership, I've been able to train some of the security staff on what Human Trafficking 101 looks like, especially here in Indiana. It's all Indiana-centric data, and then just how to avoid the grooming, like what to look for for the grooming process and things like that. And so there's a lot of misconceptions around trafficking, around suicidal ideation. And so it's just been great to be in partnership with the libraries, because these kids, this is where they're already at. And so most of our calls, they would be at the library and then like, you know, but it's not a site, so we would meet here typically anyway. So it's just a natural transition. Safe Place is also under the YMCA, and it started in Louisville, Kentucky with the YMCA Shelter House. And so, yeah, it just is a great partnership, and we just appreciate this being a possibility.
Cameron, can you explain a little bit about, so what we were doing is, we're joining with Safe Place, our libraries will be official Safe Places, we'll have these signs that are posted. But what does that mean when somebody comes in and needs a Safe Place? What happens on your side if we call you?
Yeah, so the kids, so starting from the beginning, we go out to all the schools and educate kids and hand them these twenty-four-seven crisis cards that you guys saw in the video. They see that video as well, and then they're educated on Safe Place. So some kids may not need it for themselves, they may need it for a friend. When they see this sign, they're immediately recognized that they can go in there and ask for help. So what that means is they'll go into a site and say, hey, I'm looking for a Safe Place. And what they would do then is call one of us, this is a locally operated twenty-four-seven crisis line, so it's myself and the five other staff that we work with. And we would go out and actually interview the child and see how we can help their situation. We would do the assessments as, in regards to the suicidal ideation, abuse and neglect, human trafficking, their mental health needs, and then we refer out. And then we have a lot of programs in-house that can help those kids. And so anywhere from homelessness to other things like that. And so we have a mentoring program at our YMCA branch, we have a, our Safe Place program, and then a homeless youth coordinator position where we work with youth in the schools that are dealing with homelessness. And so it's just a wide variety of services we can get them connected to. So the staff here are trained in understanding how to get ahold of us and how to utilize this as a resource. And so we would come out no less than twenty to thirty minutes, and then we would meet with the youth, and so then we would take it from there.
Thanks for cheering a little bit, I'm going to have you stay while I, in case we have more questions. So we have committed to rolling out Safe Place at all of our locations, we are starting with five. So far, we have completed training at Georgetown, Pontiac, Little Turtle, and Woodburn. Woodburn is significant because this is the first rural location that is a Safe Place site for their team. We are expecting response times to be a little bit longer just because of the drive, but we, that's, it's needed in the community. And we know it's needed because we've seen incident reports and things happen at our libraries where we're like, oh, we wish we had had this resource to call. Of course, teens or kids can call this number on their own or text, but if they come asking for a Safe Place, our staff now know what to do. We're also rolling out training, we've recorded training to go online, so our whole team will be able to be trained efficiently and effectively going forward. Our next branch to roll out is Maine, and we will actually be going live now that we have signage, we'll be going live as soon as we can get labels up in our spaces over the next few weeks. We'll be live at those four branches and then Maine once we're all trained. From there, we'll grow across the whole system. This is, one really significant piece to this partnership is that the Youth Services Bureau and the YMCA are connected with DCS. So if we call them for help and support, they will cover our reporting needs. A lot of times, we've struggled with staff who, they see something, they're like, is that neglect? Is that abuse? Should I make a phone call? Is that something, I'm a mandatory reporter, is this a mandatory reporting situation? We can call Safe Place now. They are trained, they know, they know the resources, they can help us, whether it's a referral, whether maybe they'll take over and make that call for us. So it's given us a safety net as staff to feel more empowered when we're interacting with kids all around us every day. Do you have any questions about the Safe Place program or our implementation?
How long have you been involved in this, with our community here?
How long have you been a Safe Place coordinator?
Uh, it's been seven years.
Okay.
Yeah.
If you take a look at their website, there are other testimonials from local youth, as well as some of the national training and outreach videos that they've produced, it's really high quality.
Not a question, but just a comment, this seems like such a natural fit, I'm so glad we've figured out how to make this happen.
We're glad to. There are a few different programs like this, and we had some concerns initially because of the requirements on our side, like would we be able to meet, you know, for example, we have very stringent privacy practices, like how does that work? We've worked through all of those issues, and we're really confident going forward that we can truly provide this as a Safe Place. And make sure that the youth, when they come, if they do want this help, that we can meet their needs in safe ways.
Is it safe to assume that the parents are brought in fairly quickly involved in all of this?
That's a really interesting question, because from what I understand, it depends a lot on the youth's situation.
Well, I understand.
Can you describe a little bit about what that looks like?
Yeah, so anywhere from like the abuse or neglect, we would typically phone in with the Department of Child Services for them to do that assessment, whether or not to contact the parent. If we ever have to take a child from your branch, we've had DCS do their assessment, and they did not substantiate. Typically, we have seventy-two hours to call a parent. With us being a part of the Safe Place program, we're under two, we're under one organization that oversees Indiana Youth Service Bureau's overall, which is called the Indiana Youth Service Association. So our mandated reporting can be delayed because we are set with like a special assessment in determining whether or not the situation is what it is. So we typically will call first, and then we take the kid. If we remove the kid and take them to a respite stay or something like that, we would like to contact the kids. However, a lot of the times, we have no contact with parents. A lot of these kids that are kicked out aren't called in as runaways, which, you know, for us would help us to start, that's always our goal is to reunify, right? Because there's just not enough services for foster care and things like that. So we always are looking towards reunification, however, the case is that not a lot of these parents are calling, and...
For example, suicidal ideation?
Mm-hmm, yes, we would. We would handle their immediate needs and then get the parents involved right away. With the CIT officer, they would do that as well.
Got you, thank you.
Can I ask, who funds you? Who funds Safe Place, through the Y, like through the city, I mean, are the state, or how does the funding network?
Yeah, so we have, we're under the YMCA, so we receive a substantial amount of branch support from our larger organization, which is Metro. And then we also apply for a lot of grants in order to do these programs. And then we have a fundraiser every September where it's called Fort Wayne Sings, and people come out, and it's like, it's kind of like The Voice. You know, they have singers judge, and then there they have judges, and then it's a great time, it's all I know. I'm usually out because there's a call for it, so, but it's a good time from what I'm hearing. So that's, we get funding from a lot of various places, but the YMCA, that branch support is huge and crucial for us.
Youth Services Bureau actually functions as a YMCA branch?
Yes.
So if you're familiar with the Y system, they count.
Yeah, yeah.
And can you give us a little bit of, how busy are you? How many metrics, like is it twenty calls a day, one call a day?
Yeah, so it's feast or famine, sometimes we don't get calls all week. I would say the average per year is about sixty calls where we have to go out and like actually, you know, send out resources and referrals. We also get a lot of calls from people who don't necessarily fit in our demographics, so these are like, you know, you're adults with, you know, adults that just need a place to go. We give them referral information over the phone and still follow up. We have a lot of families that we work with as well, but in terms of all of the different calls, yeah, like today, we had, we had two calls today. And so, and I'm doing an event at Southside with their ninth grade orientation giving kids these cards, and so it's random. But overall, I would say the flat number is sixty calls, that would be the average or the mean. And then if we had to go per month or so, it'd probably be like five a month.
I can say, from Cameron having to duck out of meetings, like they are truly random, and they will truly pick up the phone anytime. So we have talked about what that looks like in our branches, we've talked about procedures for like the end of the day of our closing, and all those other circumstances that our staff might face. But having this resource really is going to take a lot of that, the fear and trembling and legal questions and parent contact questions off of us, and we're really grateful for that. We're so grateful this resource is in our city.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on to Susan's Executive Director's report.
Thank you, Paul, I submitted a written report, a few highlights from it. We are in the thick of summer outreach season. We were in the Three Rivers Festival Parade, and we will be at Fort Wayne Pride, the nonprofit resource fair of the festival this weekend. And you'll see in the report some pictures from our presence at the parade, it was very hot but very fun. The library and the Genealogy Center hosted the Midwest African-American Genealogical Center Institute, July ninth through eleventh. And we had attendees here from ten states, as well as Indiana. We had thirty-five people here for the entirety of the conference, and fifty people tuned in online. When I asked the group how many were here in Fort Wayne for the very first time, I saw several hands. So we were happy to host them, and they had a very, very good time, and many of them said they are planning a return trip. Staff and board members from the Follinger Foundation visited Team Reed's summer learning outreach sites this month. They seemed very engaged and very pleased with their investment in the program. Our friends at the library held their annual membership meeting on July eleventh, and Mike Horton was re-elected as president of the organization. Something that we recently offered that I'm hearing a lot of great community feedback about, and I wanted to make sure you know as well. Now, for free with your ACPL card, you have free remote digital access, that means wherever you are in the world, to the Wall Street Journal and the New York Times, full text, day of. Marty, have you tried it yet?
Yes.
Good, good. I also wanted to share that as of this month, July, I began a term on the Board of Directors for the Rotary Club of Fort Wayne. And in other Rotary news, this month, we had great representation from ACPL as our guest speakers. Kurt Witscher spoke earlier in the month, and this week, John O'Rourke from Access Fort Wayne addressed the club, and they were both very, very well-received. Also want to share that we are wrapping up this week our summer reading program, summer learning program. That also includes our summer feeding program. I had mentioned in a previous meeting about our Blessings in a Backpack partnership, where children could come to select libraries on Friday... come to select libraries on Fridays to get a pack of food that could last them throughout the weekend. I did the math this morning of how many we have given out so far. So far this summer, we have given out 4,002 food packages to children, which is just remarkable to think about. Tomorrow will be the last day for distribution, and also the children who come to get a package of food will get a backpack, an actual backpack, to take home that they can use during the school year as supplies last. So we anticipate that being very, very popular. I also wanted to point out that you have your quarterly manager's report this time. You always seem to enjoy a lot of the content in here. There's a lot to go over. Per your suggestion, we are now sending hard copies of these in the mail to our local county and state elected officials. A few things I wanted to point out in this quarter's version, if you look on page seven, there's a great picture of our youth librarian Jennifer from Grable. I believe Jennifer is the librarian Rebecca shouted out on Nectar that you saw a few minutes ago. But I thought that was an amazing photo of her doing storytime at the Leo Cedofield Town Park. I think it shows that we are trying to get to every corner of the county, including our rural areas, and we are grateful for these great partnerships that we have with our local parks. I also wanted to turn your attention to page 39 in the report. So this is something that I admit I don't fully understand, but I don't need to fully understand it to appreciate how important it is to teens. Our teen department had its first interlibrary video gaming tournament. So teens from Georgetown, Tecumseh, Shawnee, and Maine competed against each other with a teen at Maine winning first place. I don't know much about the technical aspect of it, but I do know that esports and video gaming is huge. There are esport leagues at the high school and collegiate level, including at PFW. There are now college scholarships for esports. It is just blowing up. So I am really glad that we are giving an opportunity for teens to participate here in the library, and who knows where it might take them. Might take them to a college scholarship. And that is all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Susan? Okay, well, we're going to move along then to new business. Is there any new business to come before the board? Seeing none, is there any public comment at this point? Don't see anybody in the audience that wants to speak. Anybody online?
No comment?
Donna's shaking and said, "No," said, "No public comment."
Said, "No"?
No.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Number 12, motion to adjourn.
Go on.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I'm sorry, Susan?
Did I say aye?
Did I skip something?
No. I think I voted.
We are adjourned. Thank you. We do have an executive session.
We do, yes. Just like on autopilot, I think I just did.